At this time, we're adjourning from executive session. We'll go to our regular meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Board members, you've received the minutes from our previous meetings. I need a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Hancock.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Do we have a representative from city council for tonight? Mr. Lauer?
Are you ready?
Sure. I can hardly wait.
We've had a few exciting events go on this past week. They've been very exciting. We had the Play Ball Gala that was put on by the Chamber of Commerce. What a great night that was. I think some of you were in attendance, and it just highlighted what's happening in Hamilton and what we're looking forward to continuing to happen. City Council was very proud of the Hamilton City School year. I think this is the right time to say this. I think our leadership navigated through the most difficult times since 9/11. There were many challenges and even conflicts, and I think Hamilton City School District did a great job of staying the course, fighting through all that, and triumphing in the end. The teachers, our teachers are to be commended. They fought on the front lines, braving every sneeze, cough, and hidden fever, risking their own personal health. The teachers adapted, they improvised, and most importantly, they persevered. Last Tuesday night was a great night. Weather worked out. It was perfect, and I think that we finally got to take a breath as a whole group, as a whole district, and as a whole city, just to kind of celebrate and recognize some of the accomplishments of the great class of 2022. So, we've had some good things going. I think that myself, with people like Chris Cannell, working with the Hamilton City Schools, I think we're going to continue to highlight some of the things at city council, some of the great things that are being done in our classrooms, that, you know, in the elementary schools, they don't get publicized, like our athletic programs or our fine arts programs. And I think it's important that we do that. Mayor Moeller is extremely excited. Every opportunity that he gets to walk into our schools and see some of the great things that are going on in our school districts. So, I just want to reach out and say congratulations on a great year. I think that the school district did a wonderful job, again, navigating through the most difficult time since 9/11. So, you guys are to be commended. Our teachers are to be commended, and even all, you know, our custodians and the whole staff. Hopefully, we're past this. So, good luck with everything, and I look forward to working with you and talk about more opportunities that are coming to Hamilton.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, it's a very special night. For those who have not seen it yet, TV Hamilton has done a great job of highlighting a lot of the activities from Spooky Nook for that opening. So, that was wonderful. Thank you. Board members, you've received copies of policies that need our approval. You've had time to review those. I need a motion to accept those, to approve those policies.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on any of the policies? Mr. Hancock.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
I don't have any papers saying there's public participation tonight. Is there anybody? Okay, thank you. Mr. Holbrook.
Thank you, President Sprague. As we close out the year, I want to share a few remarks as I reflect on the past year. Our dedicated teachers have made it possible to have our doors open during this year. I think that's really important for our community. Higher-than-typical staff absences and quarantines due to COVID-19 protocols have made it challenging to cover classes, especially with a statewide shortage of available substitute teachers. In particular, I want to thank our teachers who have subbed during one of their two planning bells throughout the day. Our current agreement with our teachers allowed us to have an adult in every classroom that has a license to teach, is familiar with the protocols and culture of the school, and is an employee of the district. We appreciate their dedication and resilience. I recently asked the Butler County Educational Service Center for some statistics to provide an additional perspective on how our internal substitution policy has been supported this year. On May 13th, in Butler and Warren County, we had 1,000, 136 teacher absences. 416 of those vacancies were filled. Because we're able to cover our vacancies within our district, we do not have to deal with some of the same challenges that neighboring districts did. Again, I want to thank our teachers for stepping up to this challenge. I know it's difficult. I know it's challenging, but I also, there is tremendous benefit to that with our students and our parents. In addition to teacher coverage challenges this past year, we've also been focused on addressing achievement and growth gaps. The Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Program, or ESER, has allowed the district to address these gaps by co-teaching in our classrooms throughout the district between kindergarten to third grade. Placing two teachers in the same classroom at many of our K-3 levels is a luxury that many districts don't have, and we're experiencing many success stories with our initial growth data. We're very excited to see that program 12 to 18 months as it continues to expand and grow. We closed the year feeling fortunate about our talented teachers we have in our district. Due to a competitive compensation package and expansive planning time that district teachers receive, along with aggressive recruiting efforts by the district, we've been able to attract some of the most talented and qualified teachers in the area. They are certainly creating classrooms that are robust, exciting, and encouraging to all students. Thank you, Hamilton City School District teachers. The Hamilton School District Board and district are working on a long-term agreement with our teachers' union to keep the district teachers' compensation competitive with area districts so that the district can continue attracting the best of the best. Both parties have been engaged in good-faith negotiations for the last five months. A tentative agreement was reached between bargaining representatives in late April and was signed off on by both sides, per the collective bargaining agreement. Representatives from both sides felt the written agreement concluded with a fair resolution. The written tentative agreement was then given to the Hamilton City Teachers Association for its members to ratify. It's the administration's understanding that this tentative agreement was not ratified at a recent HCTA membership vote. We are respectful of the process and are ready to discuss any concerns with HCTA if and when they reach out to administration. We are also confident that an agreement will be reached to secure Hamilton's place as a destination goal for teachers to be employed for years to come. As we conclude the final day of the 21-22 school year, I want to thank all our staff for a really successful year, and we look forward to having a summer where we can recharge and recoup and get ready for the 22-23 school year. Those are my comments tonight to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd have to agree that our teachers are second to none. The, what they have done this year through the pandemic, through all the difficulties we've had the past couple of years, it's just been remarkable, and it's very much appreciated what our teachers do. I want to just say one thing that I don't think a lot of people understand how subs work. We don't have, we are part of a, for lack of a better, consortium of other school districts. We all join together, and there's one pot of subs out there. Hamilton is very fortunate in how we do it because there's, our teachers are subbing within the classrooms. When you look at Cincinnati, and I'm just going to throw a stone, I'm sorry, but I will, Cincinnati is in such dire need of subs that the state allows you to have anybody with a college education come into the classroom. That's how it's been for years. Cincinnati has had that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Holbrook, as long as you are 21 and over, you can sub in a classroom?
I think there's been some flexibility given most recently. We have held to the standard. We want someone to at least have a bachelor's degree, which the consortium initially did. But the benefit that we have is we have licensed teachers.
Exactly.
Know our buildings, know our kids, and they've stepped up to that challenge. It's a challenge.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a challenge to do that, and they've done that, and it's been a huge benefit to our kids to do that.
I agree. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. At this time, board members, you've received your consent agenda, items on the consent agenda from Human Resources, Curriculum Instruction Technology, Special Education, and Business Operations. I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on any of those items? Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Before we go on, Mr. Holbrook, I assume you want to say something?
I do. We just hired three talented professionals that are joining either our district for the first time or are being promoted into various positions, and I want to recognize them, have them come to the podium, and introduce themselves to you.
Please.
The first is our new principal at Linden Elementary, Brandy Hazelwood. Brandy, you want to come up? Before you get to speak, these are very valuable for the board. If you and the crowd get this, and I want to present you this.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, honey. He was very excited to come tonight. My name, Brandy Hazelwood, I am serving right now as the AP at Highland Wrapping Up, and I am thrilled to be joining the Linden team and leading them as their building principal. I just got to be here just last month with you guys, sharing about all the awesome things that we're doing at Highland, and I can't wait to take some of those awesome programs and just continue to grow the legacy that is Linden. It's a wonderful community, it's an amazing staff, and I am very blessed, honored, and humbled for this opportunity. So, thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Joining Brandy at Linden as the new assistant principal of Linden is going to be current instructional coach, at least was until about five minutes ago, Michelle Connerman. Michelle, once again, very valuable piece of merchandise.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Michelle Connerman, current instructional coach at Brookwood and Fairwood Elementary. My Hamilton career started at Linden Elementary in 2014, so I'm going back home to lead, and I am so excited for this opportunity. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
And finally, our new director of 712 Curriculum Instruction is here this evening, Jeremiah Henson. And Jeremiah, can you come up? You probably, I'm certain, have never seen one of these before. Once again, treasure this.
All right. I didn't see this in the contract. This is a freebie. All right.
There's nothing in it, by the way.
I was checking. I was looking for envelopes, gift certificates, paper. No, thank you so much. I'm super thrilled to be here. Everyone that I have talked to in curriculum relations, by the way, has been super positive, positively impacting, and they always talk about how collaborative the district is. So, I'm excited and thrilled to join the team, really am. I'm a dad of two girls. They're going to turn 14 and 11 over the summer, so work keeps me sane, but also home keeps me sane as well. A little bit about my background, I started out in Lakota, taught eighth grade science in Lakota, and then from there, I went to Hamilton County Educational Service Center, spent many years there. Half of my time, I was a school improvement coach in a lot of urban districts, and then the last half of my time there, I was a state support team consultant, so I helped turn the school districts around, get them out of that school improvement process. My last year there, I had spent some time consulting at Mount Healthy and ran into Mr. Holbrook while he was there, and then eventually I got kind of recruited into Mount Healthy, was the executive director of teaching and learning at Mount Healthy for quite a while, and then I started working with Great Oaks Career Campuses. They wanted me to come out there to do some time with them, had a great time learning about career tech, and what attracted me here was the incredible focus on and the belief that, hey, there's many pathways to student success, and not only are the teachers doing it, but programming-wise, they're like, we're actually going to do it. So, we got the CT, we got the early college, we got CCP, we got AP, everything to meet every type of kid out there. So, very student-centered, student-focused. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm honored. I cannot wait to start working with all of you, so thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Board members, we have an item from Human Resources regarding a change in assignment and salary increase. I'd have to have a second, a motion to approve this Human Resources item.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Hancock.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Abstain.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
And it's yours.
Mr. President, I have a handful of items for your consideration tonight. I'm going to bounce around here just a little bit, just to consolidate this. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as necessary determined by the county budget commission, and it's an annual form. We simply have to approve for statutory purposes with budgetary law. So, we've reviewed that for accuracy and would recommend the board approve that. We'll talk about financial forecasts in a minute. We've got a confirmed purchase requisition. We request your approval of, again, a handful of donations and financial reports. We can talk at the end, but we're really going to kind of cover all that stuff with the financial forecast. I do have forecasts available up here if you want to distribute those or give those out to people, that's fine. It'll be just a minute as I pull this up. The whole pile's available. All right. Well, I guess you got to do the, you got to do the tab. You can't do that. Any better? There we go. There, it's showing up over here. Yeah, that one has problems. You do have it available to you on your handout there, and what I'm looking at is the last page that I'm going to speak from. There's a variety of notes in there for you to read at your leisure, and it's just going to take a few minutes tonight to look at the forecast and what's it been historically? Because a lot of things are changing, and this is behind most of you out there on the big screen, if you want to see the numbers. Otherwise, again, it's the back page of the handout that just went around. Look at general property tax, and it remains fairly steady. You can see where it started in 2019 at 17.5 million, went up a couple hundred thousand, went up another couple hundred thousand, backtracked about half a million this year, and we've talked about that. So, the 17,477,797, even last year, I had said the number didn't quite make sense. It was, it seemed like a high collection when looking at the numbers, and so unfortunately, yeah, we were right, and it did self-correct a little bit. There was also a refund in delinquent taxes this year that brought further down. So, as we move forward, we expect it to bounce back. We're not buying into it bouncing back entirely next year, but as you move on forward into 2024 and 2025, you will gain, because you're at the 20 mil floor. So, if taxable values increase, your collections will increase. So, what a forecast will show you on a district that's at the 20 mil floor, when you look at those numbers going across, you can see it jumps up from 17.8 to 18.1, and then 18.4, and then it levels out at 18.4, that final year. So, that tells you the two years prior, you either went through a triennial update or you went through a reappraisal. Takes two years for those to totally come into effect because of the collection period calendar year versus July 1 to June 30 fiscal year for us. Moving on to tangible personal property tax, that number surprisingly up a little bit this year to 318,494, and it's kind of bounced around from 151 to 204, up to 210. And again, we don't believe it's going to support that number next year. It's going to self-correct, so it's going to go down to 170 is what we're believing. And then the numbers indicate that it should level out in the 260 range to 270, 280 range over the final three years. Again, it's not a huge number in relationship to everything else in the general fund, but that is how we see that number going. This is where the fund starts, when you get into the state funding. State funding back in FY19, the 75,46,894 and the 42,07,356, you look at those combined, it's 79,254,250. In comparison, you go to the next year, it drops down to 77,379,910. Why would that happen? And it's about the time the governor came in and did the budget cuts. If you remember, we had that one-time budget cut. Then it starts coming back a little bit. Last year, you're at 78,177. We got some of it back last year, if you recall, late in the year. Didn't get quite all of it back, but you got some of it. Well, now it gets really fun. We had the fair school funding formula in 2022, and that number, I just told you, we were at, what, 78 million? Yeah, we were at 78,177 last year. The revenue number now is 75,441. So, that number actually goes down. We've talked about it. It goes down because there are several items that are on the expenditure side that are no longer there, those being the scholarships were taken out, and that was about a $5 million number when you look at the district, when you get into all the various scholarships, charter schools, and things of that nature. So, we'll talk in a minute on the expenditure side, and you'll see we've got those numbers down quite a bit, too. So, it helps you on that end as well. Mrs. Baker is very astute at numbers, and she would ask me, Bob, why did your numbers drop by 2 million on unrestricted funds? And next year, what's up with that? And at the same time, you notice that the restricted funds jumped from 6.4 million to 9.4 million, 9,399 change. What's happening there is you're on basically a transitional guarantee this year of a couple million dollars, meaning the formula, the way it calculates out, calculates to more than they're going to give you. They calculate out to less than what you should get overall, so they have to kind of support you up and prop you up with a guarantee. Well, next year, we're going to really come off that, but the way they're going to come off that is we're going to do it by getting additional DPIA dollars. That starts kicking in next year. What didn't kick in so much this year, and that is directed largely at the higher poverty districts, the larger districts in the state of Ohio, the city urbans. So, that current guarantee is sitting up in the top line. Well, that's going to go away, and that's why that number goes down. At the same time, you're going to have the bottom line go up by that DPIA number. So, again, 2022, 75.4 million. Next year, 76.3. And then the numbers level out, and we're looking at about a 1% raise predicted in future years. You know, why so little? What's going to happen the next biennial budget? And that's the real quandary, because the funding formula is in temporary law. It's not in permanent law. So, it's going to be very interesting to see what happens when that time comes next year, about January, February next year, things will get interesting. Property tax allocation, that's going to run fairly consistent. That's a, that portion of your tax bill paid by the state, and so again, you really don't see a lot of change there. All other revenues, and it was running up around 4.2 million, dropped down to about 3.48 million, and this year to 3.282 million, and then even next year, down to 2.4. Couple of things going on. There are postings in the state foundation formula to code like 1227, which wouldn't mean anything to you, but that code's in this line item. So, as part of those corrections, we had to pull that out to get the numbers to equate out to what the state funding formula is saying now. So, that is causing the 3.2 million number to go down. That has in there a second Medicaid settlement. The first one was about 700,000 this year. The second came in 680. So, that's why you're seeing it go down in future years on that line item, because we do not anticipate to be receiving two Medicaid settlements in a year, because they've basically caught up at this point. So, that shows you where we're at on the receipt side. The other thing that will happen is advances in. Last year, we got to about early June, and all of a sudden, the state said, oh, by the way, we're not going to be processing any more ESER fund payments to you, and they'd been behind on that. So, that created a rather large number out there for us. This year, the number's going to be between 2 and 2.5 million dollars. We're going to continue to do that for the next couple of years, but when we get out there about three years, you've got cash balance issues, so you're not going to be able to continue that process. We'll have to go to a different process that will work. And so, that's why, basically, in 2024 is the last year that we will advance money out. It comes back in July 2025. That's why you see it there. When you look down here into the expenditure side, advances out, it's not going to be there in '25 or '26. Any questions on the revenue side?
So, Bob, back on the ESER funds, that, those are, we need to reiterate, temporary?
One-time dollars.
One-time dollars.
Not in the forecast.
Not in the forecast.
But they do impact the forecast, and we're going to talk about that on expenditure.
Correct. That's an important point.
There we go. On the expenditure side, salaries and wages, they call them personal services, we have quite a few things there. When you look at the notes, and I want to go to that and really kind of go from those. We hired approximately 80 people this year to do the two teachers in a classroom at the early grade levels, and...
What page are you on, Bob?
I am now going to page 14, and I'm looking at the notes at the bottom, and I'm really, and the second part of the notes, where it starts, the district hired approximately 80 We're going to need to pull back from that, and you want to land that plane gently. You don't want to land on the front, on the front two wheels, because that doesn't go well. So, as we have the opportunity over the next couple of years, at the attrition, we will start reducing teachers that are in those programs, and there'll be some other staff as well. And this number is constantly evolving. I think we'll do at least the 18 FTEs. I'm pretty hopeful we're going to do a little bit better than the 18 FTEs, but at the time we spoke about this, we were going to have 18 full-time positions reduced next year. So, that's what's in the forecast.
Through attrition and retirement, not through layoffs.
Yeah, so there are no layoff notices, none predicted here at all. When you get into '24, we're predicting '21, and then the final year is a little more, it's at 32, to start to bring us into the line, and you'll see here in a minute why that makes so much sense. The forecast also has additional dollars out there for potential raises. So, right now, the assumptions on raises for next year are 1.5, '24 is at 1.5, '25 is at 1, and '26 is at 1. Now, there's a proposed 5% lump sum that would be paid out of ESER funds. ESER funds are not in here, so before anybody asks, that's off to the side. It has been accounted for out there, and, but we wanted to be transparent in the fact that that's, yeah, been discussed.
And just another point I think that's important is the fact that as we go through this attrition, seeing the dual teaching, I think at some point, Mrs. Blevins will be sharing some additional MAP information, that we've seen a tremendous amount of success in that, so I think that we're going to try and do everything we can to make sure that we continue that practice. that practice, because it's really paid off, and it was an experiment, and it seems as though it's done well. But again, those were temporary dollars.
So, in the Escher grant, it's not only the 80 teachers, it's the 80 teachers in the classroom with them.
Right.
It's 160 teachers, plus some other things going on that are out there in that fund. So, when you scan across there, you can see that come '25, that number jumps substantially, and these reductions are helping to impact that number at this point. But again, that's going to be a challenge that we look at as we get out into '25 and '26, as those one-time dollars go away. And I think any district that got a sizable sum through Escher is dealing with that issue, how to land it gracefully going out, and I won't say all the work's done, but I would say we've taken a good step forward on it. So, that's where we're at on those, and that will also impact a similar increase in fringe benefits. They're tied together when you do that. The employees' retirement and the fringe benefits, second line item, 20 million last year, just about 20.8 million this year. The two big numbers, it's going to be retirement, and it's going to be medical insurance. You know, it took a 9% last year. The forecast has 7 and 6 is in there for projected increases. We're running at 6.5%, actually, 106.5 ratio to claims to premiums right now of Butler Health Plan, meaning that as of right now, this year from January 1, the group as a whole is running at 6.5% more than what the premiums are paying. So, that's an early indication that, yeah, we're looking at some type of increase, so it gets a little better, but there have been challenges out there in additional cost as we get rebooted and people get caught up on their medical procedures. So, we'll continue to watch that at Butler Health Plan, but that is certainly a concern. That's one line item I hope we do better in as we get out into these future years.
And when there is an increase, what percentage of the increase does the district take?
The board pays 85%, the employees pay 15%.
85, so any increase on the entire health premium is 85%?
85%.
Okay.
Purchased services, again, I mentioned earlier, we're going to have some interesting numbers there. So, it's running around 19, 19.5 million. All of a sudden, 14.2 million. And you'd ask again, why'd they drop by 5 million? It's those charter schools and all those scholarships that are no longer coded through there, and they're not through the funding formula, so those things just kind of go by the wayside. So, you can see the number just kind of increases. I believe I got about 3% out there going forward. Supplies and materials, running a little heavier this year than last year. Were we really spending at previous-year levels? I don't think so, when I look at 1.7 and 2.6 back in '20 and '19. So, we've upped that number and allowed for percentage increases in future years. Other objects, we had a property liability insurance increase this year that was sizable, and that's just what the industry did. So, we're anticipating, I barely see those go down. So, basically, we're going from there on out, and hopefully, we don't see a bump like that going forward. Earlier, we talked to you about the advances in. These are the advances out, and they stop obviously one year earlier, because that's when we're going to end it. And why are we ending it? Well, you start looking at the cash balance, and line 6.01 is always what you want to look at, and we start using resources quite heavily next year. And keep in mind, we're sitting here in May. July 1, 2022 slides over to the other side, we put another column out there and start looking at it. That number's going to be kind of ugly from what we're seeing here right now. So, we'll have to continue to work on those things to bring them in line. Again, that's four or five years out. Things change, but it does show you a general pattern you're going to have to watch. At that point, I'll give you any opportunity you'd like to have to ask questions of anything I might not have covered. All right, so we do ask for your approval of that. I'm not sure how much value the financial reports are at this point, but we'll go ahead and look at them real quick. Just got to hit the right tab here. Oh, there we go. So, for the month ended April, we anticipated 87.5 million, came in at 88.1 million, 584,000 to the good. Again, these numbers are going to start changing in May, because we've made a lot of adjustments here with the forecast. Moving on to the expenditures at 78.6 million versus 80,156,870, so we were running ahead at about 1.5 million from plan. Again, that's been allowed for in all we've talked about here, and we'll see those things start to correct. We've just had some higher expenses than we planned for, particularly in the fringe benefits, and I believe that's basically, because they were heavier than we anticipated in the general fund, because not quite as much as what we thought would go out to the Escher Grants did. And I noticed that when I started looking at some of the people leaving this year. We did an actual cost study, and I was surprised at the number of people that are leaving that aren't on a family plan. It was alarming that it was such a small number of the entire group. So, that's just how the numbers rolled this year. That would be all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Lot of information.
Yeah, it's that time of year.
Yes, it is. So, I need a motion to approve the finance report. Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Okay. Any other business? So, at this time, I just want to remind you that our next meeting will be on June 9. It'll be beginning at 4 o'clock and probably moving into executive session, so I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I'd like a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.